Mike on one o'clock, we will call back to order the business meeting of the Clickitac County Board of Commissioners. First item on the agenda at one o'clock is public hearings, public meetings and bid openings today. We have the Public Works bid opening for the 2023 crushing project. And we will start with a little staff update or something to.
Thank you. Got to tell me your letter opener.
How big of a? Supply do you figure you're going to get? How many years for this supply you're going to get out of this crushing? Any ballpark estimates?
Five to seven years.
Five to seven years of the rock. Got it. Uh, okay. And the engineer's estimate is two million, two hundred thirty-one dollars, three hundred, sorry. Two million, two hundred and thirty-one thousand, three hundred and thirty-seven dollars.
Okay, ready?
Yep.
So our first bid is from Western Construction of Lewiston, Idaho. Wrong side. I don't know how to use your fancy knife.
I can sharpen it.
And the bid bond is present. And the total bid is two million, six hundred eighty-four thousand, one hundred and three dollars. And the second one is Copen Hour Construction. Preston, Washington. And the bid bond is present. And the contract total bid is four million, eighty-two thousand, five hundred and three dollars. Four million, eighty-two dollar or four million, eighty-two thousand, five hundred and three dollars. Theatly crushing Lewiston, Idaho. And the bond is present. And the contract total bid is two million, three hundred and seven thousand, eight hundred and seventy-one dollars. And final Brumfield Construction Aberdeen, Washington. And the bond is present. Contract total bid, three million, three hundred and eighty-eight thousand, nine hundred and three dollars.
All over the map. Well, I guess I would say thank you all for your bids. Some of you more than others. With that, do you have a recommendation or? I will step down and move that we remit this to the planning department for review and recommendations or for the Public Works Department for review and recommendation.
Thank you. And I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to remit it back to the Public Works Department for review and recommendation. Any discussion on the matter? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Thank you, kind sirs.
Can I see your bid sheet?
For my what?
Your bid sheet. I just wanted to look at them when you're reading them.
This?
Yeah, when you're reading them, I did.
You don't even write them down. I think we only do go in the rock crushing business. What do you think? To.
It's hard work.
In many ways, sir. In many ways.
Interesting.
Yeah, that one was up there. I said two of them were around the engineers. Just to remind everybody, the engineer's estimate was two point two. We had one for two point six, one per four mil, one for two point three, and one for three point.
That happened last bit opening too. We had one construction come to us.
Well, I believe my personal opinion is there are certain companies that really don't want to work, but they'll throw a bid in that's, you know, a million and a half extra profit. And if, if you want to accept it, fine. And if there's nobody else that bids, they get to make a lot of profit. Um, that happens in county businesses as well. Again, personal opinion. Um. Next item is a public meeting, not a public hearing, a public meeting to consider the recommendation from the planning commission for the amendments to the Clickitac County zoning ordinance for Clickitac County Code Title nineteen prohibiting large scale solar development over one acre in size. Uh, the proposed amendments uh is applicable to areas in Golden Dale and Centerville Valleys within township ranges three fourteen, three fifteen, three sixteen, four fourteen, four fifteen, four sixteen, four seventeen, five fifteen, five sixteen, five seventeen. In Clickitac County, Washington, and I can't wait till I get to stop reading all those townships. We're close. I have the original map because I'm the one that drew the boundary.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um. All right, we'll start with that. Good. Thank you for this, by the way.
Oh, you're welcome.
Um, with that, I will declare the public meeting open to consider the planning commission's recommendation for amending the Clickitac County zoning ordinance at Title nineteen prohibiting large scale solar development over one acre in size in the aforementioned townships and ranges. Um, with that, I will allow an opportunity for the commissioners to disclose any ex parte contacts they may have had. Uh, and I have had.
None.
Okay, uh, with that, we'll go for the with the planner's review.
Okay, so as you've already noted, you're here to hear to consider the planning commission's recommendation for amending the zoning ordinance and county code Title nineteen, which would prohibit the large scale solar development in these areas and the planning commission recommendation you have along with all the correspondence, meeting minutes that are draft. And basically the board has three options and you can summarily accept the findings and conclusions as presented by the planning commission and then direct staff to prepare an ordinance. You may summarily reject the findings and conclusions as presented by the planning commission and deny the entire proposal. Or you may set your own public hearing and then you would need to schedule a time um to have your own public hearing and then take additional public testimony. And just a little kind of side comment in regards to comments. This is just a public meeting, not a hearing. It's up to your discretion of whether you want any comment from the public.
As chairman of the board, I think we've had enough public hearings on this issue. Um, so we will keep this as a public meeting. Um, with that, I do have a question. So if we summarily accept the terms today, we are not signing any documents today. You would have to prepare an ordinance and resubmit that to the board in our next meeting two weeks from now for signature, correct?
Correct. Um, I do have a working draft, but it is a draft at this point. So I would bring it.
The question. Before my seat made. Um, the packet included was like seemed like three hundred pages. It was, it was a good day and a half to read. Um, some good information in there that I didn't know. Um, in comments because we tried to stay out of the planning commission's meetings and their testimony and whatnot, so that when we sit on this, we're sitting on it as a neutral body. So I finally get to catch up on everything they've been doing for a year. Uh, with that, I did have the time to read it. I don't know that my seatmates had enough time to read it. And or whether my seatmate wants to not make a decision on approval or denial until our other seatmate gets back. Or if they want to technically. If we want to move on it today, it would still give our seatmate time to at the next meeting, whether he wants to sign it or not sign. Um, so he would still be on the record one way or the other, which I'm okay with.
I'm okay with.
So, um. It's been a long time coming. Three years of hard work. It's going to be weird to have it behind us, but um, thank God it's behind us or soon to be behind us. With that, since I started it, I'd like to finish it.
And I did have time to review.
You did or didn't? Okay. Um. With that, I will step down as chairman and make a motion that we summarily accept the findings and conclusions as presented by the planning commission.
And I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to summarily approve. Is there any discussion? Uh, the only discussion I will add is um, thank the planning commission. And thank the citizens who have endured um, damn near three years of the process. Um, and an election cycle. Thank you. Um, to get us to where we are today. Otherwise, we wouldn't be where we are today. Um. So thank you all. And with that, any other discussion? Okay, we have a motion and a second to summarily accept the findings and conclusions presented by the planning commission. Uh, prohibiting solar in the aforementioned township ten ranges, solar over one acre in size. Um, all those in favor of summarial approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. And thank you for the planning department. I didn't thank you for all of your hard work with the planning commission and getting all the evidence and facts and everything together and and presenting it to us.
Well, thank you and definitely Mochi started the whole process. So I.
And then we can thank her online too.
Yes, yes.
If she's smart, she's ran far away and isn't listening, but uh. No, I will be very happy and pleased when I get a sign it. But I would remind everybody that nothing this board does can't be undone by the next board. So stay diligent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, that was fun. I got a bang.
Oh. Official now.
Not yet. We haven't signed it yet.
You gotta get better at that.
I know, right? I don't bang gals. Um, with that, we have a she left the building. Uh, we have a public meeting for consideration of an additional six months extension to complete all conditions of approval for short plat SPL twenty twenty-one dash three zero. Applicate and Co. Properties LLC. Um. Essentially, I will give a staff. There we have. There's somebody here. I looked up. There was nobody here and then, okay, go ahead.
Back there. Um, before you today is a request for an additional six month extension to complete all conditions of approval for short plat SPL twenty twenty-one dash thirty applicant and co properties. The Clickitac County subdivision and short plat ordinance one, two, two, zero, eight, two allows for one year from preliminary approval to submit all conditions required for final approval. An additional one year extension can be granted if requested by the applicant. A provision for any extension beyond this is not included in the above ordinance. The applicant requested and was granted a one year extension by the planning department on September second, twenty twenty-two. This extension moved the plat expiration date from November sixteenth, twenty twenty-two to November sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. The applicant has again asked for an additional extension due to the acceptance of the drainage report. And the lack of a county planning director to sign the Mylar. Both may not be valid by the end of the day, but however, um. If the board feels that is extension and extension is warranted, the board will need to make a motion to grant a six month extension extending the current deadline to May sixteenth, twenty twenty-four for short plat SPL twenty twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one dash thirty. I do want to mention that the drainage report was accepted by Public Works on ten thirty-one. Their extension request was on ten twenty-four, so that has happened. So.
So that is done and the only thing they need an extension for is to sign a Mylar.
Um, basically, they, they have to be finally approved by November sixteenth without this extension, and that's not going to happen just because of the circumstances.
Okay.
And we've done this twice in the last four years for varying reasons.
This length of extension anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah.
One was COVID and one was supply chain from COVID. The other one was, I believe, trying to get their roadwork done because of the weather.
But pretty much they have all their other conditions met and they're ready.
Actually, as soon as we have this. I received the Mylar yesterday, so I have them scheduled for the twenty eighth.
Okay.
But we still didn't meet the sixteenth.
Yeah.
Right. And that was.
Okay, it seems we're given a six month extension to go two weeks, but um. If that's the way our code is written or whatnot, I'm okay with it.
Whatever. They asked for six. It could have been three. It could have been two, one, you know, they asked for six and I just, you can see the uh request here, I believe.
And there's a, yeah, and there's already an application, so no sense changing it. I, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with it. Um.
Continue to motion or?
Yeah.
Um, so Mr. Chairman, um, I make a motion to approve an additional six month extension to complete all conditions for the approval of short plat SPL twenty twenty-one dash thirty applicant and co properties, Joseph Copeland.
Okay, I'll step down and second the motion discussion. Uh, the only thing I didn't know is where was, where's the location of this?
Uh, Box Canyon.
Box Canyon.
Yeah, north of Box Canyon.
Oh, it was in the packet. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's all right. Okay. Uh, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of granting the additional six month extension uh to short plat SPL twenty twenty-one dash three zero, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Thank you very much, and hopefully we'll get the signing of my last thing should be behind us now for a lot of them. Uh, so I got a few to work on. Big projects. Um, we're ahead of schedule. We don't have budget for ten minutes. Do we think we should wait ten minutes before we discuss budget in case people actually want to listen to our supplemental budget? The audience is like, I don't want to have to wait.
I, I.
We'll start with that. You have a better rock crushing bid for us?
No. And it won't take ten minutes, but we can drag it out and just kind of brainstorm a little bit.
Uh, slow.
Real slow, right? Okay, um. So from everything that I could find with my predecessor, it appeared that, that the county has always done public hearings for supplemental budget adjustments. Um, I have received confirmation that we're, that, that's not a requirement.
Correct.
Um, it is a requirement to post a notice to, to the paper of record for two weeks that there is a resolution on the agenda to make budget adjustments. Um. I have a really strong feeling that that emergency supplemental in December will, will be utilized this year. Um. And that one is such a short turnaround. Um, so I would like to propose not doing the public hearing for that particular one, this go around. Do it to what RCW statute. Um. Because we cannot.
Is your fear if we do the public hearing actually making a deadline?
Right, so I guess.
Getting it in by the deadline.
That we need to get it done. The public hearing adds a week to two weeks to this whole.
Because of the notification.
Because, because of like the packet having to be put together to put out there um to the public, then the notifications and and so forth. So it, doing the public hearing does cost the county time and money and, and when we're in a.
The same three commenters or two or one that we get.
We actually haven't really got.
One, we usually get one.
Yeah, maybe sometimes. Sometimes we, we got one on the budget adoption, but um.
And they could still make written comment if we search.
So I would like to propose that I, I post notice with the option of written comment to um the B O C C or my email. Um. And then go from, and go from there and see how that works out. Um, still, still put together a packet, still post it on the webpage for everybody to access. Um, you know, the resolution would still be in the board's agenda packet. Um, and the option to comment could be there just in written form. Um, but when it comes to the December. Directors do not have and elected officials do not have the opportunity to really review their budgets as a whole until payroll is processed, which is roughly the seventh or the eighth of December. Once that's done, the auditor's office can get the reports out so that they could really look at their, their budgets and what their needs are. Now, I would have to immediately turn around, which I think that's a Friday this week. Uh, or this year. So I would have to turn around, get that posted for the next two weeks into the newspaper, which the newspaper has a deadline in order to get that posted. Um, and we're adopting the week of Christmas.
So I, I guess I'm going to try to reword what you said in layman's terms or stupid man me. Um. Because we wouldn't get the data to know what supplemental we need until after payroll on, say, the seventh. You would have to do the entire job of the supplemental. The directors would have to do the entire job of figuring out the supplemental within a day or two to be able to post it in the newspaper and then sit around on their hands for two weeks waiting for public comment.
Yes.
Um, that puts a very big time crunch and a bigger potential of making mistakes. Um, I would rather let staff have adequate time to make the correct choices. Um, so I am in agreeance with um that for the December supplemental.
Yeah. Thank you. And, and yes, it is very challenging to do what typically, you know, to do it thoroughly takes me a week to do. Um. With nothing, no other distractions into really a day or sometimes a few short hours because the deadline is strict with the newspapers.
Okay.
Which they, they're, the legal team at the newspaper is great and they, they worked with me as long as they communicate, but.
Will you have consensus?
Well, thank you. Did we, uh, that only took up five minutes.
It doesn't.
What else do you know?
Um. I, I would say we wait. It's a public hearing. It's one thirty. We need to wait till one thirty. Um, just in case somebody's online, since we have it as a public hearing and they may want to testify, I don't want to not give them their opportunity.
Going forward, I'll make sure that that notice is states one. I just had already noticed, put notice to the paper at one thirty before the.
Yep, no, that makes sense. Um, well, we used to do them at one thirty, so.
Yeah.
We've kind of changed our agenda up a bit, which has been working out, I think, fabulously. Well, then, unless somebody's got something else to do, I'm going to sign these three or four, these three or four papers, three or four. See, there's the subdivision map. Interesting. I almost bought property next door to that. I guess.
Miss you at one o'clock.
I guess it was a little farther over, huh?
I said, told Kathy we miss her at one o'clock.
Yeah, she doesn't want to get up at nine to come in for public comment.
Somewhere else. Yeah.
Uh. I will say it's nice being able to sign all these before four o'clock.
Bet it's nice for you guys to be.
Well, that they can double check and make sure we got everything. Don't have to get called back in to sign something.
Have you heard any numbers on the participation in the election last night when I looked at twenty-two point six percent?
It isn't going to be high just because it's midterm. Um, my ballot in Centerville had five races, but only one of them was contested, school board race. Um, so I, I would bet you we're going to finish right around thirty-five percent or something, which is standard midterm. Nothing exciting. It's not even a midterm. It's an off midterm. Midterm was last year.
City of Goldendale, Captain.
Yeah, well, I wish I could vote in the city of Goldendale because there's, there's enough to vote on in there. No, I would imagine, and I could be wrong, they give it a week or two and you might see the auditor on our agenda giving us an election recap. Um, it has happened in the past anyway. You, maybe for bigger elections, I may be wrong, so. Uh, they would give us those numbers on voter percentage and stuff like that. My phone's not dinging with text messages, so I must not have just put her on the spot. Thirty seconds. Let's start early.
Okay.
Um, we're going to do now a public hearing for the twenty twenty-three dash oh three or, or third supplemental budget of the year. And I will let you start while I dig up what I thought I had, but I don't have. I guess I could have been doing that for the last five minutes. Probably my office had the hearings uh thing printed. But you probably have it here. But you probably have it here labeled and then I was just reading from there. Oh, she's got one right there. Look at that. See, I'd already printed one. I just left it in my office.
Dan, I have a question.
Sure.
What constitutes reasons for supplemental budgets? Management of resources or what?
Uh, will you hear all about it, but I'll let her give a quick. How about this one? How about if we go through the supplemental hearing and you may get the answers to what you want? Uh, to know, and if not, we'll come back to your question.
That's why I I.
No, it's only like five minutes, but she's going to cover all the items that are going to get sup- supplementals and why? So that should be able to answer your, that might be able to answer your question without going through it again. Um, with that, we'll declare the public hearing open. Uh, advertising the purpose of this hearing is to accept public testimony both in favor and opposed to the twenty twenty three. Uh, budget supplemental a- amendments and fiscal manager Jen Neal will provide a brief overview.
Okay, hello commissioners, um. As stated, this is the third supplemental budget appropriation. Uh, this year in the twenty twenty three budget cycle, as you all know, the budget is a living document, um the moment that it's adopted. Something changes, so um a supplemental budget is how we deal with those changes, um those changes might. Might be completely budget neutral, um we were awarded a new grant and therefore have new revenue that needs to get into the budget in order to put the revenue in. Um, we need to have the expense to match it and a supplemental budget needs to happen in order to get that it within our budget and our system. Situations could arise um that were um that were we were unaware of um. When we were building. The budget, our our new ERP system that we're going towards was not originally budgeted, um because we weren't sure when that would land. Um, in that in the process, if it would land in twenty three or if it would land in twenty four, so that. That is a part of this um supplemental budget, there there's an IRS um payment and reimbursement going on. We will get, it'll be a net zero, but the payment has to go back out to get reimbursed from the IRS. Unexpected. That that's a supplemental budget, um. I also have in here, um. We an insurance adjustment. Um, we built the twenty twenty three budget, um. Really not sure exactly how our insurance, our new insurance carrier was going to bill us. And when those billions would be due and how we would allocate that.
And and I would also add that we didn't know what the bill would be.
Correct.
Until this year in July, but we had to guess the number last year.
That is, that is true, um. And and just getting on their system, so our new insurance company wants us to to pay for the insurance a year in advance. Um, it comes in really. In October, um. And is due in October of. This year for twenty twenty four, so um. I have a supplemental budget in there that I did myself across the board for any departments and funds that needed that um. Additional appropriation. Because that's that's what we told the directors that we would do during that budget build process. Um, senior services has received additional revenue from a grant. Um, behavioral health has additional rev- revenue due to some billing that they're able to do, um. The trial court improvement fund had equipment failure and are going to have to um do some repairs there. And then, if you remember, we built the twenty twenty three budget without without building COLAs into. The cost of living adjustments into each separate department, we we built the budget to have that put in a non-departmental so that. If it was needed, it was able to just be a technical adjustment and moved out of there, so. But those technical adjustments when moving from one fund to another still require a supplemental. Um, you had a trans- transfers um on your consent agenda today. Those were the technical adjustments, all just within the general fund, I'm able to do it that way, but. When we're doing general fund to another um special revenue fund, it has to go through the supplemental process. Um. And the auditor has some microfiche conversions and self-service kiosks that she's going to finish up that um. I believe that she received. Um. Additional revenues or was unsure that 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 would actually be able to go through the way that she was hoping, um and of course. She didn't necessarily build that budget either, so um. That is what this supplemental budget encompasses, um that's three budget neutral, six um requests needing budget intervention and one technical adjustment.
Would that answer your question?
I guess. We'll get into more detail in a minute. Um, actually. At this time, we'll open the public hearing for the purpose of receiving public testimony both in favor and or opposed. Um, so at this time, I would also open it to questions if there's more detailed or direct questions and then we can answer them in our. Clarification of public statement section. So if anybody, um. Has any testimony either for or against or wants. A more detailed understanding of the insurance premium costs, the grants that we accepted. Um. Or any of that, now is your time to speak and we will start in the room before we go online. Uh, does anybody in the room have public comments for the budget?
You're you're paying this October for your insurance.
Correct. Um, and the insurance. I had it here.
They also increased that original one point two million dollar invoice.
Right, they added money in there for bribery type thing, so the insurance adjustment. Public health is being adjusted three thousand one hundred and twenty seven dollars, cumulative reserve is being adjusted one thousand six hundred thirty four dollars. Natural resources insurance adjustment is four sixty nine, economic development is one thousand one hundred sixty five dollars and zero zero cents. Veteran services is one thousand one hundred and four dollars out of roughly a million point two policy. Um, there's. Seven thousand dollars there of insurance adjustment out of the one thousand or of one point two million dollar policy. Um, and part of that is the way we used to do insurance in our budget. We just kind of picked a number and assigned it to each department and we're trying to be a little more. Thorough on. So for the property coverage, go go ahead.
They had an allocation method.
Right.
They did, um, it just didn't. The way we're billed, the way our insurance is now, that allocation method no longer. Will work for us because that allocation method included. Vehicles and like some real property, um even to some expensive desks and and furniture and whatnot, and so. Our insurance now is broken down into three parts, cybersecurity, liability and property.
Right.
So we had to develop a whole new allocation method and that's part of these adjustments as well. I anticipate that we'll need another adjustment in twenty twenty four for. For that.
Just to get it right because. So it's like for property, we're taking, say, the commissioner's square footage of the building. And then we're putting their share of property coverage. Based on square footage of the property. And the senior services would pay for their square footage of the property, so that each department has an accurate and true representation of their insurance costs. And then for liability, we're judging it since we're billed on number of employees. Uh, or worker hours, we're. Piecing that out by department also based on worker hours. So it gets it a more realistic approach, so we know what a department actually costs us to operate.
And some departments um who are grant funded are able to use those. Those expenses to as administration costs um as to get reimbursed.
So in the old way, just kind of took a little piece through it to everybody and we're trying to get real and accurate numbers. But in doing so, they're going to be off a smidge until we can get everybody adjusted that way. Uh, but then when you look at our budget, you'll be able to see what it costs to run, say, the senior services department. Because that number will be a true and accurate recommend recommend or representation of the square footage of the building. Um, the number of employees in that department and their piece of the cyber.
Which are all ran off of L and I worked or employee worked hours.
Still question or no question?
Built this school this week for a long time. And they never talked about budget adjustments.
Interesting. So it for us, it's as simple as if the state comes out with a new. Breastfeeding grant. For public health. Uh, in public health goes, hey, we can use these dollars to promote breastfeeding or whatever they want to do in order to accept those dollars. It's not in our budget, we didn't approve it last year because we didn't know it existed.
Well, they could use those dollars they thought they'd allocate and they got the grant. Using the grant dollars.
Yep, but we have to actually. Would. We have to do a budget supplemental just to accept those dollars to be able to expend those dollars, even though it didn't cost you anything, it's still a budget supplemental. So as those things happen or or we put. You know, five thousand dollars into somebody's budget because they just never have any equipment breakdowns and then their copy machine blows up. Um, it. I can, I can develop. In the budget. In in I get in trouble every time I use the word slush fund. I can put a, I just got really eyes. Um, I can put excessive fund balance. Into each department. So that they have a fallback if something breaks, but in doing so. Most of that fund won't be able to be used, won't get used and or they can use it for something else. Uh, we would rather have that tighter so that if there is an issue, they have to come ask for money since. We are kind of the keepers of the purse strings. We want to make sure that they're using each tax dollar wisely. Um, if something breaks, come and ask for a replacement, we'll give it to you. But at least we can be accountable for. Spending the money. And you don't find twenty five hundred dollar office chairs in your payroll anymore or in your bills anymore. Um, see, I'm getting, I'm getting in trouble. I'm gonna stop talking now. Any other questions, public, uh, go ahead.
Insurance company?
Washington County's insurance pool. Off the top of my head, we used to be in Washington Rural Counties Insurance Pool. Uh, which had a great conference that I got to go to. Uh, they wine and dine you really well. Uh, but at the time, it was one one a year, conference a year. But at the time, we were paying about one point four million dollars. Um, and I don't believe we were getting act adequate services, adequate training for. Uh, our departments, adequate risk management. And so in doing some research, the other risk pool. Uh, was way cheaper. And um provided those tools, uh police simulators, things like that to help us. Um, defend against further litigation down the road. Uh, and at a much cheaper price. And at the time we switched, we went, I think, from one point four million down to about eight hundred thousand. Now I have to go to three boring conferences a year instead of one that you just drink cigars and or drink whiskey and smoke cigars, these are actually working conferences. Um, but it's much better for the county both in price and in risk liability. So. Hence the reason we switched.
And over the last couple of years, insurance has been going up twenty percent.
Twenty to twenty five percent a year, so if you can imagine what we were at one point four million a few years ago, that would be up closer to two million now and we're only at one point two, so it's still that. Really good cost savings every year. Uh, going forward, but those are the only two we have. Uh, the only two insurance carrier choices we have.
Yeah, so.
And um, all right, and um. We can't get our premiums down anymore unless we get the legislature to pass some kind of tort reform. That will limit the um. Lawsuits. That, you know, aren't, you know, you're capped at five million and not twenty million or something because all of our insurance has excessive coverage over the top of it. And all of those are just skyrocketing because, you know, one jail death in Spokane County, they got sued for twenty million dollars. Uh, well, we had a jail death here recently. Um, if that's twenty million dollars, do you really want your taxes to quadruple overnight? So you have to pay for those extra coverages going out. So and then we did adjust our deductibles was part of the change in that insurance and part of the change in that insurance is. Our automobile coverage is now we're going to be self-funded. Um, so if you, if one of the workers hits a deer with their car, we used to be able to turn it into the insurance company, insurance company paid to fix the car. Now we hit a deer with a car, we're paying for it out of our own pocket, but the premium to have the insurance company pay it was hundreds of thousands of dollars and we never hit a deer. And so, yeah, so it's 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 a more of a risk to accept self-insurance, but in the long run, it's going to save a lot of money. So that that's the reason we made the switch. Uh, next comment is Sherry, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, um, Commissioner Christopher, I had a quick question, I had a hard time opening up the packet, it must be really large, but um. Can you tell me how much the? Total supplemental budget. Request is?
The total supplemental um expenditures is five hundred and sixty five thousand four hundred fifty seven dollars.
So that's what the supplemental budget request is?
Yes, that's the total um adjustment. Um, expenditure adjustment.
But that is.
That is ten total requests, um. Three of those are budget neutral, one is a technical adjustment.
So just because it's budget neutral, if you're receiving two hundred thousand in on a grant and spending two hundred thousand on that grant, that two hundred thousand is still part of the five hundred.
Correct.
So just because it says five sixty five doesn't mean we overspent five sixty five.
Okay, well, I see a timer going, so I I guess I just had a question on what it was because I again couldn't open the packet. Um. So am I on my comment time? Is that what's happening here?
Yeah, you you have time, what's your comments?
Oh, okay, well, I would say that. I get where you guys are going, you want another half a million dollars. But I'm just gonna go back to corporations again and how you're a corporation and I just feel like our corporation. Could make better choices and not keep going, coming to the shareholders and asking for more and more money.
But we're not asking for more money.
Oh, no, five hundred thousand, so you're gonna get off five hundred thousand back then?
We're we're not asking for any money, we're moving money from one fund to another fund. We already have the money, it's already in our account.
Are these, okay. All right, well, it just feels like every time, what what supplemental budget is this now? Is this three or four for twenty twenty three?
There's four quarters in a year, so there's four supplemental budgets.
This one is number three.
Okay, so basically. You're you already had the five hundred thousand, so all you're doing is just moving it from one account to another.
We're moving it from one savings account to another savings account or one checking account to another checking account or removing ten thousand dollars from the building department, putting it in the planning department.
Well, I heard something about COLAs and isn't that cost of living?
Correct, but we already budgeted that, but instead of budgeting each department having seventy five thousand dollars more money for wages. When they may not use it, we set that money aside in one fund. So that we can pay it out as needed.
Am I gonna be muted in twenty two seconds?
No, I'll let you keep going.
Okay. Well. You know, I'm just saying, we all have inflation around here, everybody has insurance increases, everybody has inflation. And maybe the corporation. Can not give so many COLA. The cost of livings and people can live with it in what they make and we don't have to keep asking for more money, but obviously, this is just. Moving money from one fund to another, so apparently the laypeople that. Pay the taxes don't understand. So anyway, I would just ask that we be more fis- fiscal league conservative in our county because. A lot of people are getting hit hard with property taxes and these are people you're supposed to protect, so. That's all I gotta say, but we're all struggling here.
I would, I would add that this supplemental is not going to cost you one red cent that you haven't already paid. Um, I would add that the corporation, the public corporation of Clickatet County has nothing to do with this since the public corporation is in charge of the case appeal to board. Um, and not general government. Um, so yes, I think there's um some understand. Um, so yes, I think there's um some understanding issues.
But I thought we already agreed that we're that Clickatet County is a municipal corporation.
Clickatet County has a municipal corporation. Um, Jen, do you have your questions or comments?
Uh, I, I just wanted to uh make a clarification. Um, cost of living adjustments, we did budget those. We just budgeted it and under the general fund. Um, the rest of the state also received a cost of living adjustment through minimum wage. Um, that went up as well as social security went up um over the course of the last year. Um, unions also increase and provide cost of living adjustments. Um, and a cost of living adjustment is just not only salaries, but it also includes ben- uh, any of the benefits, which is health insurance.
Insurance increases.
L and I increases, unemployment insurance, those required um payroll deductions that the county is required to pay, those also increase every single year. DRS and so the cost of living adjustment and those movements includes not just salaries, but also those benefits that we are required to um to pay.
And and I, I would add that the reason we're doing this supplemental for COLAs is because of putting, instead of guessing what the number they're gonna need and putting it into each individual of the twenty-seven different budgets. Uh, we put it all in the savings account and said we will pay it out as needed because some of them have open positions. Um, that they can use the money without needing, they can use what they already have without needing more. Um, so by us putting it in a savings account, it, it gave us a truer um, look at what we're spending and allowed us to be far more fiscally conservative like you asked us to be.
And that you can probably clarify this for me. I probably won't say it correctly, Sherry, but that isn't something that people are not living within their means and are asking for more money. And so we, as the board, are paying more money. That's something that state assigns to us and we have a cost of living we have to meet. And so we write that into our budgets and and we move that through the budget.
Well, we technically do not have to adopt that um, that CPI cost of living adjustment increase, which we did not last year, we did not adopt what the state had put out at, and I believe nine percent of a CPI at that point in time, whereas the board, you know, um, provided four.
And that's what the state suggests that you.
We know, run off of their, the CPI um at August and and that's linked to um what we do with the union contracts. Um, so the union contracts runs off of that um CPI and the uh percentage for August and is eighty percent of that. And so um, we try to mimic that with the non-representative represented employees. Um, but again, there were counties giving five percent or more because CPI was nine and we on, we're only able to come up with four percent.
Right, and that brings up, I guess, my argument for the people that don't believe our employees deserve a cost of living adjustment when inflation happens. And I would just mention sensitively that we are in an employee market right now, not an employer market. With the baby boomers retiring, there is not enough people looking for work and definitely not enough qualified skilled professionals. That the pay has got to be adequate. Or they will go work for the hospital or the port district or the PUD or move or so we do not overplay our employees based on comparable counties, but we are maintaining um, our levels uh, to keep up with comparable counties so that we don't lose all of our qualified employees. If we, we, sure, we could absolutely decide not to give COLAs. But I guarantee you would also have a lot more job openings and it would take you longer to get your um, title transferred because there would be open positions that nobody wants because we're not paying enough. So it's a delicate um, environment that we're currently in. Uh, that we're trying to manage the budget, but also provide uh, a living wage to the employees that we have to keep them happy uh and keep them gainfully employed. With that, we'll go to any more citizen comment. From anybody that has not had a chance yet. Seeing none. Okay, now we will move to clarification of public statements. Uh, if the board has any questions of staff or questions of public statements. Um, sorry for everybody. This is going a little long. I just like public involvement because the more the public knows on how we operate, the more they can understand how we operate. Uh, any clarifications? No? I'll inquire one last time if there's any public comment that hasn't had a chance before I close public comment in the room or online. Hearing none, I will now close the public uh hearing to further public testimony uh, and ask if there is any more discussion by the board on the matter. Hearing none, I will now close the public hearing uh, and call for a motion on the matter or a continuation till a future date if a motion is not amenable.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the request for the twenty twenty-three third supplemental budget.
Hey, we have a motion to approve the third supplemental budget in the amount of five hundred and sixty-five dollars, five hundred and sixty-five thousand, four hundred and fifty-seven dollars, which again, a lot of that is just moving from side to side. It's not new taxes on anybody. Uh, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval of the twenty twenty-three dash oh three supplemental budget, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. I, did I not step down a second? Nick?
And Jen had a question.
Jen, go ahead.
Um. Just to add, because you mentioned taxes and I think one of the comments had mentioned taxes as well. Um, property tax only increased in twenty twenty-three by fifty to fifty-four thousand dollars. There wasn't um.
The one percent?
The one percent.
Yeah.
Um, new construction is another, another part of that, but the one percent was fifty to fifty-four off the top of my head. And of that, about thirteen cents goes to the county general fund.
Thirteen cents of every dollar?
Yes.
Yep. Um, with that, it's been called out that I failed to step down and make a second. So we, I will redo that. Um. If we still have the motion on the floor, which I believe we do, I will step down and second the motion on the floor to accept the twenty twenty-three dash oh three supplemental budget. Uh, and call for discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor of the correct, and thank you very much. Um, in favor of the motion of approval of the twenty twenty-three dash oh three supplemental budget, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. And thank you for catching that.
Yeah. And it, just as a reminder to the public as well, um, fiscal does have its own webpage. Um, if they go to the county webpage, they go to government, they could find the fiscal services department. There is where all the board, all the packets are for the supplementals as well as the budget and the CIP.
It will be easier because now you do a great job of making these little packets uh, for the public and and putting the links up there for the public because yes, our board packet this week is four hundred and thirty-three pages long. Um, and a lot of that has to do with the planning commission's recommendation for the solar. That was very thick. So it did take a while to download and if your download speed isn't uh good, but if you get into the packet, uh, this portion of it starts on page four hundred and eleven.
Or.
And it's about twenty pages. Or you can just go to the fiscal services website, click on the link, she'll have a nice, pretty um supplemental budget presentation. Um, thingy, and here we get to go. I guess I could have shared my screen and scrolled through it as we were doing it, but. Alrighty then. Moving on. Thank you, Jen. Uh, I don't have department updates, new business miscellaneous reports. Um, I don't know, we can move back into our SEPA planning discussions if you want.
Sure.
Since I don't see a whole lot else on the schedule there. Unless I missed something else. I don't see it. That's it?
That's it, yeah.
I would have went, I haven't golfed in years. It's driving me nuts. I need to play again. Um, so you got the new.
Yeah.
Packet.
Kind of like we thought.
I would add there's some.
Yep.
Things.
Yep. Yep.
Because of things.
Yeah. No, I think it looks good. Did you?
But um, I had Lori make these notes. And so, yes, on the Bluebird consultant needed, um, Lund Hill consultant needed. Um. She's got her name here, but she's also saying it may potentially need a consultant. Um. Have you not got a color copy?
No, I'm good.
Can't tell what's highlighted without a color copy.
I, I can read the names alongside.
Um.
But I see what you're talking about.
So she's saying something she may be able to do, but if it turns into a little bit of a bigger ordeal, then she's gonna be able, and I told her by all means, then come forward and say, hey, I need a consultant on this. So it's like that. She's like, sure, I'll start that, but if it needs something, I'm gonna have to let you know because some of these could turn into bigger um, deals. So yes, like Denise is the lead on the port district stuff, but with all the wetlands and shorelines and everything down there, it's gonna open up a can of worms, Yakima Nation's gonna appeal. We already know that.
For that.
So, so probably consulted. Um. But this, it, it tells you a lot of things that aren't gonna need, and that's why I said, I think, I think this will work because we can take these need consultants in order to give Jeff so he can put out for the RFP on what the things we need consultants for.
And I think this needs to be on a consultant's list too.
Um.
It's gonna have, it already has um.
Oh, yeah.
Cultural resource problems. Yeah, okay, you've got it on there. Okay.
It's there.
It wasn't written on the side.
Well, mine, my, my copy's highlighted.
I'm not.
We're saving the yellow ink in the printer today.
Yeah.
Um.
Okay, that makes sense to me.
So.
Maybe share your highlighted copy with Jeff?
Yeah, well, that's, well, if I can print out, I gave Jake one on his chair over there, so he has a copy as well. Uh, but this gives us that. And then if we want to make, like I said, I think, I think this will all staff will do as directed. Um, so as long as we tell them we're okay.
And this, this is always hard to deal with. I can tell you. This. That name. Probably will take a little more finesse.
Well, and I think that's what this question mark is over here. So it's kind of like.
To be there.
Well, and I don't know, to me, I think that's one of the questionable ones that we might start out because we have to be careful throwing too much stuff at the consultant, see what that bill's gonna be. So I think it could start out with staff.
And when it hits the fan.
And if it, if it turns into something, then it can get shipped into the consultant.
Okay.
Um.
Yeah, that works for this one too. With Denise, I'm happy with that.
So.
Hit a wall, then you go for the consultant questions. So, yeah, the hard, the hard line ones where they agreed we needed consultant are fine with me. And then everything else should be, if it becomes.
So, yeah, the first three are there, the last one is consultant. And then two over here. And the last one down here.
Yep.
Now, a lot of these, I mean, the consultant's not gonna be doing much because right now it's just, you know, they're talking about doing a rezone or something, you know, they're not doing anything. Um, and so staff can um, hey, I'm thinking about putting in a five trailer RV park. We don't need to hire a consultant to answer their questions. Lori can do that. And then if it turns into, okay, the permit's happening, now you need to do a big NDS SEPA, then we'll shift to consultant. So it's like a lot of those things on this. We can handle in-house for now. Um. Before it goes to consultant, but I told Lori, obviously, anything that you feel is outside your wheelhouse or needs to go to a consultant, just tell us.
Yeah.
And we'll, we'll do it there, but. And I think we're all on the same page.
When she hits those hard ones, she'll be glad to. Thank goodness.
It's just, she need, she needed to know what exactly she's doing. And what exactly we're shipping to a consultant for what she's starting on.
Yeah.
Um, okay, I will go talk to her and give her the heads up, which is pretty much a yes. Um, and then I will give a copy of this to Jeff Hunter, who said he was gonna be here this afternoon. Um. And um, I'll give him a good briefing. And then we should be good to go to go out to RFP for consult. Hey? Oh, we already did that, didn't we? No, we still need to come up with a some kind of.
Direction.
Formal written directive, correct? Um, that just changes the wording of the resolution that you have. Doesn't make it a resolution, it just makes it a written directive. Um, that we can sign and um and that says for the SEPA officially stuff like you have and project as assigned by the board officials. And then as she brings in updates every week of here are the new projects, here's a gravel pit, here's a five lot subdivision, blah, 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 whatever. We can say you were consulting on each one of them and designate what she's doing and what's during the console. But then again, she, that way you have the written directive. Um, that would, I think, appease my seatbelt. I still bet you it goes to thirty-four. That's my number, thirty-four. I won't remember that next week, so whatever it ends up being, I'll claim I was right. Clickatet County does have a pretty good turnout for non important elections. Sorry for everybody that's running for office this year. For saying not important elections. Uh, for non midterm, non general uh presidential year elections, Yakima County is the one that's absolutely hideous. Uh, if their turnout's over twenty-three percent this year, I'd be shocked.
So um, do we need to do any kind of consensus or vote that we can actually activate Lori today and then so she could start signing things?
We already technically gave her consensus last week. She just wasn't sure we gave her consensus. So that was um, through her talks with Rob, she wasn't sure that she had consensus to activate.
I just wanna make sure.
Rob told her yes, and then when I went up and talked to her, I told her yes as well. So technically, we can once again give our thumbs up for consensus to sign those mylar's.
Yeah, go on, Lori.
Um.
And then we'll get to official.
And, and we'll get the, I mean, it's official right now, but if we want to create a policy directive, we can.
Okay.
Uh, so then.
I just wanted to know that she, because it, the clock is ticking.
You're right. So what else did we have? Anything? My papers are a little scattered today. Uh, we have interviews this afternoon. For natural resources. Now it's interesting, one of them's at three and one of them's at four. That's a big space between them. That. I think that's all I have unless you have anything for the, the order. I think that's all I have unless you have anything for the order.
Else this afternoon, no.
Two o'clock. Wow, that's, that's an early one.
Office work I can do.
Actually, it's like I got no shortage of office work and we're cleaning up the paperwork pile on my desk.
I think we used our time well this morning and filled down.
Yes, I agree. Less, there was less debate to take up time. Um, yeah. So if we don't have anything, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, I will step down and second the motion to adjourn, noting that uh, there will be no uh workshop on November 9th and the Clickatet County Board of Commissioners will not be meeting next week on November 30, uh, 13th. Um, because we will all be at a Washington State Association of Counties uh, conference with every other county commissioner in the state, all, whatever it is, 271 of us. Um, so we'll be back in two weeks. Is that, oh, interesting. And I guess I will announce that we are, will be going into executive session um, with HR, um. With the HR Administrative Services Director, Rod Van Cleve, in accordance with RCW 42 dot 30 dot 110, print one, print G, to review the performance discipline and or qualifications, in this case qualifications, of a public employee. You know, issues of a general nature will be discussed in an open session. And again, that is the two job interviews the Board of County Commissioners has today uh, on potentially filling the natural resources position. Um, other than that, we'll be back in two weeks. Any other discussion on the very long.
Oh, that's gonna be weird.
Motion. All right, all those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you all in Zoom land, and hopefully we all learned a little something today.